We're gonna call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. All board members are present. With that, we'll move on to the National Anthem. If you would like to stand for the, if you would stand for the National Anthem performed by Connor High School Choir.
We have 13 choir kids in KU choir tonight, so we didn't quite have the numbers.
We're happy you're here.
Oh, no, it was awesome.
Now, we'd like to invite the pledge to be led by the students of Steeplechase Elementary. We would like to acknowledge this past Tuesday was Veterans Day. If there are any veterans here tonight, please stand. I guess we're all standing. I only, I only read what is written. I'm like the anchorman. Anyway, we'd like to acknowledge your presence and thank you for your service. And with that, Steeplechase.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe, we got something for you all too.
Nicely done.
Thank you for, for pinching us. Absolutely. Yeah. You guys so much. Send the dress. I just want to provide.
We'll get them to you.
We can get them to you. Thank you so much. Absolutely. I think they're, that's it. I don't know, you got some, you have more special things? Okay, alright. Thank you. Okay, Addison. How about, how about? Oh, what was that? Double. Thank you guys so much. You did it perfectly, you started it right. And, and I love girls, I love the girls on the last program. Is it this Saturday? It's gonna be better at least by my side. Well, good luck, 5K. You got it ready? You know, our student, our student president has 5Ks too. Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to the good news items and turn the meeting over to Dr. Housewald.
Good evening aboard and thank you. For good news item number one, we have our break the mold. And so tonight, we are recognizing Ms. Edwards. We'd like to. We'll have more time for that and a speech, of course. We'd like to congratulate Ms. Edwards, as she is a second grade teacher at Goodridge Elementary School. And tonight, you're going to get to meet a teacher who has taught for, I, I'm just gonna read what was in here. Four generations of students. That includes Gen X, Millennials, Gen Z, and then she's now teaching Gen Alpha. And we're gonna watch a video and we're gonna go from there.
Does it look like you have a pageant bib or the A word?
Yeah.
How many of us can say our elementary school teacher is still teaching? Some of us wish we could go back and tell that teacher about the effect they had on us.
You have choices, and your choices are what makes you.
This is a story of a few former students who had that opportunity with Ms. Yvonne Hembling, now Mrs. Edwards.
We were back at Goodridge for a coffee conversation with the superintendent and somebody jokingly said, "Any of your teachers still here?" And I laughed and said, "I don't think so." And then they said, "Well, what about Mrs. Edwards?" And so I said, "Oh yeah, she was my second grade teacher." So we decided we had to go and find her. We walked down the hall of Goodridge Elementary. It was like I was walking back down that hallway when I was in second grade. And literally, she was standing in the doorway. Well, first, we had to get a picture.
I was a student who I loved to read, loved to learn. I couldn't tell you anything she actually taught me academically, but I can tell you how she made me feel as a student. And, and that's really what made me want to go into education. I tell people all the time, she's the reason I became a teacher.
Ms. Hembling, as she was called then, was Kim Best and Daryl Denham's second grade teacher 51 years ago.
I remember being so excited to come to school. It was the only year that I ever got straight A's because she made learning so much fun. We played board races with like a princess and a dragon where the, we had to rescue the princess before the dragon got to her. She inspired me so much as a second grader that I would go home in my basement playroom and I would reenact these games or like reenact the work that we would do. From the moment that I had her, I never wanted to be anything else.
The thing that stands out the most to me unfortunately for her is that I was sick one day and I didn't feel well and I hadn't gotten sick yet and I stood up to tell her that I wasn't feeling well and I threw up right in front of her and she, and I think it got on her shoes and she was so kind about it.
I came from a family that was impoverished and didn't have great parents. They didn't have all the skills that they needed. And this is probably where I'm gonna cry. But she didn't care about that. It didn't matter that I came into class every day, probably a hot mess, you know? She treated me wonderfully and welcomed me in her classroom.
Susan, Monica, Kim, and Daryl each ended up back where they started, either as a teacher at Goodridge Elementary or working in district administration, all because of Mrs. Edwards. More than 50 years later, she still inspires a new generation.
She was a great teacher, kind, but also strict at the same time. And like, she was probably one of my best teachers ever. I feel like because she was that way, she made the student like I am today.
She was just so sweet and so kind and it, there was like a world record for the best teacher. I think she would win it.
I tell people all the time, she was one of my favorite teachers ever.
When you need that adult that you don't have somewhere else and you get that from a teacher, is really why we do what we do in education.
My year that I was hired as a second grade teacher, I was on her team that year. And that was just like my Cinderella moment. I got to team with the person who inspired me to be a teacher.
Yvonne Hembling Edwards has taught for 35 years, over more than a 50-year span, taking time out to rear her own children. Yvonne says teaching should never be about reinventing the wheel, but pointing it in the right direction.
The question I get more often is, have the kids changed? I get that question. And I honestly put thought into that and I, I can't see the kids have changed. They're just kids. I mean, they, they all need to be taught to read and write and how to behave and follow directions and learn to be kind to one another.
She's a standout teacher, right? And I think, I think if you become a teacher, most likely you've had some standout teachers.
She still helps with drama clubs, she's still part of action teams. So it's not just that she's in the classroom and still here after all these years. She's truly embedded into our culture. I think it just tells a lot about her personality and her perspective. She loves the whole child and yet she can also move them academically.
Don't bother asking her about retirement, she still has work to do.
Everybody's asked me, "When you gonna retire and blah, blah, blah?" And I'm saying, "Well, I could do this and this and then..." So you come in, "Yvonne, if you love what you're doing, don't let anybody tell you when to retire. Retire when you want to." Right now, I still love my job.
Congratulations, Mrs. Edwards, you're an amazing teacher and you deserve it. I'm so happy that you have won Break the Mold.
Congratulations, Mrs. Edwards, for breaking the mold.
Ms. Edwards, congratulations, you are so deserving of this. And I know that this is hard for you because you're so humble and you don't want to hear how amazing you are, but just know that we all think that you're amazing.
Congratulations for winning Break the Mold. I thought you were the best. Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Congratulations, Ms. Edwards, we love you and I can't wait to see all the other teachers you continue to inspire.
Congratulations, Mrs. Edwards, when they made you, they truly broke the mold. You're one of a kind.
Ms. Edwards, also known to me as Ms. Hembling, and you will always be Ms. Hembling to me, I want to congratulate you on being the Break the Mold winner. You deserved this when I was a second grader 51 years ago and I am sure that you have deserved to be recognized for that every year since then. I want to thank you for the impact that you had on me as a second grader back then and all throughout my life today. I appreciate you so much and know that you are a life changer for so many people.
Come on up here, we'll get some photos and we'll give you the microphone. Will the former, her former students that were in video, please come up?
Come over here in the middle. Start here. And do we have other students that will have? Any other students? Come on, I know we have a few others. Come on up. Come on. We got some more pictures, we gotta get the rest. Come on in, we need to nail, we stayed here, what else to say? Yeah, it's fine, it's more appropriate. And then family, we'll get one with, and, and. Just gonna do a bunch of arraignings here.
Thank you all, thank you, I love you guys. Thank you all, thank you so much. I'm gonna forget that. I'm gonna make everybody watch.
That is right. Ben, I say a few words. We love it. If you talk into the mic, they can hear at home.
Okay, well, I will be succinct because I know people have to work tomorrow. And I do too. But I, I can't, I mean, I can't put it in words what all that means to me if the things were said about me. You know, you get a job you love and you work for 50 years and then you hear these things and they tell me one day in an email that I'm gonna get this award. I couldn't believe it, I don't know how many times I had to read it to believe it, but I don't expect a reward because my, my teaching every day, when the kids, and these older kids that I've had, when they come to school every day, that's the reward right there. They show their love and respect and honor for me and I hope I give it back to them. And that's all I want to say about that and thank you all so much for this award.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. If you don't, there was a story in there at the beginning. We do coffee conversations with all of our schools, all the staff. We have, it's a great opportunity to engage with our employees, to thank them, answer questions. And so earlier in the year, we were at Goodridge and so if you don't know Daryl Denham, he's our director, executive director of business and he's new. And we were there and Daryl made the comment, he said, "I went to school here, I have not been back here in, in decades." I have not been back here in, in decades. And so I said, oh, welcome back. Cause Daryl's, you know, coming around to see all the schools and things like that. And so, you know, someone said, as it was said in the story, do you have any students here? And any teachers still here? And he said, no, no, no. And someone said, what about Ms. Edwards? And the neatest thing was his face just lit up, like something about it. So we know Ms. Edwards does a great job.
Thank you. That was sweet of you to say that.
Good news item two. All right, come on up here, Mr. Clark. I saw him. Oh, yeah, there he is, standing in the back. So good news item two is Jones Frisk Coordinator wins the Harry Cowherd Award. I guess it's Cowherd. It wouldn't be Coward, it's Coward. Cowherd? I grew up on a cow farm, I should know. Jones Middle School Frisk Coordinator Jalen Clark has won the 2025 Harry Cowherd Award for Center Excellence. The Cowherd Award is the Frisk Division's most prestigious award honoring a sinner who excels in a crucial role of serving kids and families. Named after the late Harry Cowherd, who was a former secretary of the Cabinet for Human Resources. He was a staunch advocate for family resource and youth service centers concept. Mr. Clark was recognized and celebrated last week in Lexington. And if you're unaware, this is a tremendous award. It's really the top of the marquee in terms of recognition for Frisk coordinators. And if you ever go to R.A. Jones, you're going to run into Mr. Clark and you're going to have conversations and you're going to be inspired. He does amazing work for our students and we're really proud of you. We're going to give you the word, take photos and we'll let you say something.
I want to say really quick, I've known Jalen for a few years because he was also the S V F R C at Connor Middle. And I know that when he moved to Jones, we were sad, but we also knew that Jones was getting a blessing. So thank you for sticking with Boone County and pouring everything you have into our kids. Cause I know they love you so much. Thank you.
He's been like eight or, he's getting eight or 10 coffees.
I know.
Only two. Oh, good, you can buy two. Any words?
I wasn't planning on, can I just talk?
Absolutely. You don't need that. Talk into the mic, they can hear you at home.
Well, I don't need that.
It's all, they didn't come to see you.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I just got out of practice, so I was speeding over here and almost didn't make it in time. No, it really is awesome to be able to get this award. When I first got to Jones, I walked straight into Mrs. Parks' office and I said, there's only one real goal that I have and that's to bring light to this community. And this was the first step in doing so. So I'm really grateful to be able to have this opportunity. But to me, you know, the award's just a plaque, you know? What, I think like Ms. Edwards said, the real award is getting to see the kids come in every day, see how they respond to the programs that we get to do. And yeah, that's, it's pretty much the funnest thing I've had, had the chance to do. So I love it. It's a lot of fun.
We're giving a photo of the coordinators here, so. All right, let's give them a round of applause. Good news item number three, continuing series on career and technical education in Boone County Schools. Tonight's focuses on Family Consumer Science. Family Consumer Science teaches valuable life skills that promote health, wellbeing, informed decision-making and all lessons that have a ripple effect from the student to the family and the community. And at this point, we're going to show a video.
Culinary Arts Class, Food and Nutrition Class, Fashion and Interior Design Class, Child Development Class, just a few of several pathways in Ryle High School's Family Consumer Science Department.
Foods and Nutrition is our introductory level class. In that, we focus more on cooking for yourself and in the home setting as well as nutrition and learning about how food fuels your body. Culinary One and Culinary Two focus more on the food service industry. So higher level cooking skills and learning those industry skills like customer service and food safety.
I think it just really helps develop those skills before we turn these kids into the real world. We help them foster, you know, what they want to do after high school.
Career and Technical Education, it is the real world application.
Is this what they're supposed to look like now?
Yes.
On this day, Mrs. Erickson's students are making snickerdoodle cookies, but this lesson isn't just about baking.
We're trying to get our surface license. It's where you can be a manager at a restaurant and like run it legally. And we're taking that test, did you say December 19th? We're taking that test and if I pass, I can be a manager at Jimmy John's where I work. Get a $2 raise, that'd be nice.
When I first joined Fashion to Design, I had no idea how to sew, but then I learned. I love it now. It's very calming. We've made two projects. We've done a tote bag and a makeup bag. And we've just embroidered our names on it, but I'm, it can do so many other things.
Some of Mrs. Dew's students are in Raiders and Training. Since high school starts earlier than elementary, Ryle staff can bring their elementary children to school with them until it's time to catch the bus. Those students go to Raiders and Training.
In Raiders and Training, that's our Child Development Services, one and two classes. We've been able to add a play school atmosphere for them. They love our reading chair, our reading rug. We've just added our shelf with our book collection.
In Mrs. Dillo's Early Lifespan Development Class, students are assigned real care babies. This assignment is where real world makes its introduction to the unsuspecting student.
They coo, they need fed, they need their diaper changed, they need rocked, they need burped. It's at the beginning, they think it's fun and oh, can I go buy an outfit? Can I make it cute? But then once they have to, that baby wakes up at 2:00 AM. That baby wakes up just like a real baby does. So it is not fun.
Students are assigned to care for the artificial baby for two days as if it were their own. They have to take it with them everywhere with the diaper bag, the baby carrier, the car seat and on the school bus home with them. Just like a real life baby, it cannot be left alone.
I had one kid, I will never forget it, it is embedded in my head. She stormed through my door, slammed that car seat on the table and said, you can have it, Ms. Dillo, I'm done.
This is why Career and Technical Education, also known as CTE, is important. It's teaching fundamental life skills, enhancing career readiness and fostering self-sufficiency. CTE funds provided extensive upgrades to these Family Consumer Science classrooms so teachers could teach beyond the basics.
In the Culinary and Foods Room, we got a total kitchen renovation, brand new cabinets and brand new stainless steel countertops, as well as stainless steel prep tables for the kids to work on. We got some upgraded equipment like industrial refrigerators and freezers.
It's so much nicer. It makes it so much easier. You don't have to worry about if stuff's going to break, how you're going to replace it. Everything is newer. It's cleaner, like the cabinets, these were not good earlier.
We've been able to purchase the, the serger machines, the air threading sergers, embroidery machines, a long arm quilting machine. We need that equipment to give them that hands-on experience.
It's amazing. We all have our own sewing machines, which is very nice.
We use CTE funds for my classroom. If you would have been in here last year, it was cram packed, huge bulky furniture from a long time ago. Now my classroom can, we can arrange it in many different ways to function how it best fits my kids.
And let's not forget the after-school ice cream sales at Ryle. CTE funds paid for an industrial soft-serve ice cream machine for the Culinary Pathway Classes to allow students a real-life experience with food service. The line is out the door every day.
I have students who volunteer to come and work after school and we sell soft-serve ice cream cones to students after school four days a week. It's great customer service opportunity. It's great for them to learn how to use that large equipment and how to clean it.
Because of CTE, Eduardo Reefer already has his plan for college and beyond.
Want to go for psychology, want to be a child psychologist, but I also want to double major in culinary and get a culinary degree. That way I can have two different paths. I love cooking. I love food. I'm always eating. And I plan to, in the future, open a restaurant.
Career and Technical Education, another pathway for Boone County School District graduates to be college, career, and life-ready.
Thank you for that. And thank you to all of our Family Consumer Science teachers, as well as all of our current technical ed. The ice cream is a big hit. I was at Boone High School at the end of the day, one day when they were doing that. And so I just got right in line with the kids. Then the ones after said, Dr. House, what are you going to buy us ice cream? So I said, sure. So I, suddenly the line got longer. So thank you so much for that. Good news item number four, Boone County School reaches Gold PBIS status. So I know I saw Ms. Stanball here. Do we have other Long Branch folks here? If so, oh, yeah, the whole row. I was looking over here. Come on up here, stand while we read so we can, that way they don't just always stare at me. Well, I could, I could give you a lot. Congratulations to Long Branch Elementary for reaching the Gold recognition for its high quality and faithful implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports PBIS. PBIS is an evidence-based framework for improving school climate and student behavior. The Gold Award signifies that the school has achieved a high level of success in creating clear expectations, teaching and practicing positive behaviors and using a variety of strategies to support students. So we'll have Stephanie give a quick word, but let's give a big round of applause to everybody. And we're going to get a photo. We also called by Long Branch this week, and I was telling Ms. Stanball, that one thing about Long Branch is they are so focused on high-quality, technical and targeted professional development for their staff. And they do amazing things. So it makes sense that this award is given to them. Want to say a word or two, please?
I want to introduce the team that really makes it happen.
Hi, Tim. How are you?
This is Dane Dargo.
Hello.
Summer Kidwell and Olivia Blue. Olivia and Dane are our school counselors. Ms. Kidwell is our assistant principal. And I think our systems is really what makes it work for us. We are a very collaborative team and I think our biggest thing that sets us off for success is that we all have the same philosophy on student behavior, student discipline and how we attack student behaviors. And I think if we weren't aligned in that belief system and philosophy, then things would fall apart. And so I think that's where it starts for us and then just streamlined systems and teamwork. So I think we're, I don't want to say this, but we are the biggest elementary. I think we're the biggest elementary in the state now. I think, I think. And when we have our Safe Schools Meeting at the end of the year, I think we have the best behavior data. So I think that just speaks that our systems are working. So it's a team effort for sure.
Let's give them a big round of applause. We've got just two more. Good news item number five, Connor Middle School makes top rankings for 2026. Quick congratulations to Connor Middle School. According to U.S. News and World Report, Connor Middle School ranks in the top 10 of Kentucky's best middle schools. For background, the ranking is based on students proficiency in math and reading and incorporates test results in the context of socioeconomic backgrounds. Do we have, I know we invited, I don't know if anyone from here, is Connor Middle School here tonight? We added this as pretty late news, so we, let's just give a big round of applause and enter into a record our commendations for the hard work they do at Connor Middle School. And good news item number six, I know Marcia's here. You want to come on up? Nick was shaking his head. I thought you were going to say. Come on up here. Again, it's that way, there's somebody. Congratulations to Marcia Kelly of the Boone County Schools Transportation Department. She was recognized yesterday with a special citation award through the Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society. The special citation award recognizes outstanding efforts, collaborations, and unique enhancements to the community. Every year, Marcia organizes transportation and drivers for summer field trip transport for the Boone County Parks Programs held at several Boone County Schools, providing so much additional access and opportunities to students and people in our community that would not have that without Marcia's dedication, philanthropic efforts and just a heart for making a difference in our community. So let's give Marcia a big round of applause. And we're going to get a photo and then we're going to give you the microphone. You get the last word on the good news.
Thank you. I've been here for 28 years. Actually, Ms. Edwards used to be my teacher when I went to school. So she ins- So yes, she inspired me to come in and I've been here in transportation for almost 28 years. And I couldn't do it without my fellow coworkers and everybody here tonight. Thank you.
Well, if you attend one of our meetings, you quickly learn there's so much to celebrate and so many people to thank that make, that tireless efforts to make Boone County Schools and our community better. And thanks to each and every one of you. And with that, we conclude our good news for the night. Yeah, you're good, Julie, if you. As always, there is so much to celebrate inside of our school district. We have so many wonderful things happening at every building. It's really quite incredible. All right. At this point, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five. Mr. Wykoff will give the Student Board Member Representative Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parks. Hello and good evening. Over the past month, we have worked on quite a bit, both at the SSAC meetings as well as the Health Committee that was recently formed. This month at SSAC, we focused on math in the district as well as communication skills. Ms. Denham from the District Board Office came to receive feedback on math. We first filled out posters with prompts and then worked together in groups to find themes with the said prompts. The activity was very productive, engaging, and I believe very successful. Altogether as a group, we came to the many agreed conclusions that as a student body, we learn best by group work, games, as well as from our great teachers. Following that, our Communication Committee came and presented to all the students on the council, followed up with a game based around the idea of communication that taught the importance of active listening, coherence, and clear speaking. Following that, we split up into groups and tasked kids with different ways that demonstrated different communication skills. These widely varied topics, as some were simple such as spreading the word about a surprise birthday party for a friend, and others were about addressing different age, ages of audiences, and even communicating with deaf students, which resulted in many kids learning to sign their name in sign language. The meeting was incredibly fun and I believe very thought-provoking for the young leaders of Boone County Schools. This first meeting of the Health and Safety Committee was specifically to decide the goals and focus of the school year. The group has decided to focus on three topics, sleep, hydration, and body image. In the next meeting, more specific goals and brainstorming will happen. Thank you very much for your time and I look forward to updating you guys next time in January of 2026.
Mr. Wykoff, how many students participate in each one of these meetings or sessions?
So usually there's about two from every elementary school and about three or four from every middle school. And then I think it's four from Boone County High School, five from Ignite, five from Cooper, five from Connor, and about six from Ryle.
And they all meet at the same time or is it?
Oh yeah, we all meet together in this actual room. And then, yeah, we usually have our high school leaders help plan the meetings with me and then we decide on focuses per meeting.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So there's quite a bit of participation in each one of your meetings.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's awesome.
I think I saw Ms. Rootman going 45.
Forty-five?
Eighty-eight.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Okay, so maybe she was going eighty-eight. Clearly, sign language is not my strength.
Well, appreciate, that's, it's, first of all, to fit eighty-eight in here, and with elementary students, that's gotta be quite the feat, so I appreciate you having the conversation, conversations that you guys have with every level, and encouraging as much participation as possible. That's, that's really what it's all about.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I really, I think the engagement is amazing this year, and I think that they're learning a lot from the high schoolers, and then hopefully can, you know, lead the elementary schoolers when they're in our position in a couple of years.
Right.
I just want to add that they are mentioning their health and safety goals of sleep, hydration, and body image. When we actually met with the Health and Safety for the district, we made sure that we added those goals into our charge.
Yeah, that's right.
So, just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Oh, yeah.
That the student voice is being impacted in our board committees.
Yeah. Yeah, Dr. Housewell does a great job at meeting with me, and then, that's what we talked about on Tuesday, and then, yeah, he listens to me a lot, and helps me, and gives me advice on how to help it move forward.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to Item Six, and turn the meeting over to Dr. Housewell for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Parks. I just have one presentation tonight. I will say that they put the students in a large rectangle, so I, I watch Mr. Wykoff and, and how he is, is engaging all of the students. He stands in the middle of the room, and he just captures their attention, and really does a great job facilitating those conversations. They always invite me for, they give me so much time to speak, and, and to answer questions, and to speak to the members, but really, just watching them, and I know, last week, when, when I was in the room, they were doing the math activity, and they were completely engaged. Our math coordinator was facilitating that, and they were giving us significant input on us, on, on, because we're working through math adoptions, on types of activities, what students think of math class, what they prefer it to look like. And again, they really give significant input, and that input is, impacts positively the work we're doing in, in our, in our math curricula work. And so it really, their voice is heard, and AJ does a great job facilitating that. So, and then, as we've said, usually after that, but before each one of those, I'll meet with AJ and, and in my office, and we'll have a conversation, and recently, we're talking about the, the health goals, and how, different ways to incorporate those, so that we can move those goals forward, on, on hydration, and body positivity, and sleep. Yeah. Funny, I forgot that one. All right, we, at the last board meeting, you may recall that Chairperson Wolf asked for a presentation on some data on our buses, transportation, and runtime, so Ms. Best, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations, a former student of Ms. Edwards, is going to present that data now. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. All right, so when this charge was given to us, oh, thank you. We started pulling a lot of data, and so first of all, I can thank Mr. Greer, he's our Director of Transportation, for taking on that first challenge, because you can imagine in a district our size, just how much data that is. So we started looking from the first day of school, all the way up to October 16th, that was right about the time where we decided we're gonna cut it off there, because that was about the week that we were talking about it, which gave us 43 days of school data, which gave us a good indication of what things looked like at the beginning of the school year. So these are some of the things that we looked at through this process, so I'm not gonna read all of those, but I can tell you, I know a whole lot about nitty-gritty details about late buses at this point. I love data, so I finally had to say, "Stop looking at that." Just for some trivia, Tuesday is the day that you have the most late buses. Who knew? Some of the details we had in those first 43 days of school, we actually ran 19,780 routes. That's just in the morning. So across all of the different paths that all of our buses take, that totals 663,218 miles driven during just those first 43 days of school. So think about how much our buses are traveling, and how many opportunities we have to either be on time or to be late. The exciting part of this was, because I'll be honest, I was curious, I'm like, "I wonder what that's going to look like," because we know we have lots of things that can create lateness for buses, some within our control, a lot of them not within our control. So it was really exciting to see that 98% of our routes do arrive to school on time. We are way better than Delta, just saying. So a little bit more into the details for those, so these are probably more statistics than you really want to know, but I do think it's important, because it does paint a really good picture of where we started and the progress that we've made. So overall, seven minutes is the average amount of time that a bus arrives late, and I will tell you that I left in all of the data points, including those first few days of school, when we're figuring things out. But I thought it was important to be completely transparent. Some of those were pretty extensive. We had some very late buses, so you'll notice up there, our range of lateness was anywhere from one minute, which we have a lot of those, to 52 minutes late. And I did include that detail, we had two incidences in the very first week of school, those first two days of school, of a special ed route that was very late coming to Ackerman because of the length of the route. They've since obviously made changes to that, but that has a great impact on a lot of those numbers. I broke down even further, so of the 317 late arrivals, you'll see all of the numbers below that. So you'll notice that 54% of them were in that first month of school, made some great progress, and reduced that to 46. I am sure that if we continue to pull this data and go through that, it's going to continue to reduce what those percentages are. And then you will notice that 50% of them are five minutes or less. Again, then you'll see that breakdown through there, and we have that small percentage that are between 21 and 52 minutes, 13 occurrences. So again, a few of those were in those very first days of school, where we had some different incidences. Again, we have those situations where we have a broken-down bus in the middle of a route, we've had bus accidents, we've had closed roads, lots of different things that have created those situations. This breaks it down a little bit further, because we're always curious to see how our district looks across to making, make sure that all of our schools are getting to school on time, and we don't have significant differences. And so you'll notice up there, and historically, if you've heard me talk before about where late buses were, not necessarily late buses, but double runs and things, I had anticipated that our Florence district, because we typically have the most doubles in vacant routes in Florence, actually has the lowest number of late occurrences and the lowest number of minutes late. I have a theory on that, and because District One has historically had more doubles than anybody else for a long time, they're really good at it. They're really good at doing doubles in, in District One. As you can see up there, our Hebron Cluster, the Connor Cluster, is kind of moving up second there, and I kind of mapped out a few issues in each of those. The majority are due to vacant routes, some nice things that you'll see up there, that the majority of those vacant routes have now been filled. So again, making great progress throughout the year to really tackle those, those late buses. We do have the most minutes late, and the highest number of late occurrences in the Union area as well, and again, those came from vacant routes, which have been filled. And actually, currently, District Three, which is the Union area, area, has all of their vacant routes, so no vacant routes in Union right now. A few of the other, District One and Two also do have a few vacancies, but amazing progress has been made by our transportation to fill those routes. So you'll see that on this one. District One currently just has two full routes that are vacant, and three half routes. District Two's sitting at two vacancies, District Three has no vacancies, and District Four, which is our special transportation, has one vacant route currently, and that transports some students to a regional school program in Campbell County. I did include some data on our doubles, because we know historically, we have had a significant amount of doubles, so we are seeing decreases in those. So last year, our average was 41 doubles a day. We are down to 34 doubles, so if you take into consideration vacant routes, the other ones are just caused by absences. So because we don't have an itinerant pool at this time, with some unfilled itinerant positions, we still have those doubles when people are absent. We've put a lot of strategies into place to reduce the length of some of the routes that are longer, a lot of those are special transportation routes. Since October, we have done some exchanges of unfilled regular routes and changed those to special transportation drivers, so we've been able to restructure and reroute and reduce a lot of the, the time for those. That's work that will continue, and we also have nine drivers that are currently in training. So that's an exciting thing for us, because this is about the time of the year where that the new drivers kind of slack off, and it's a lot more difficult to, to find new hires, but we're excited to have nine drivers at different stages of training. I'll take any questions you might have.
I just want to say thank you for the data, to the district staff and the transportation staff. I know it took a lot of time to do this, but as board members, we'll get the one or two phone calls that give a very narrow picture on what things are looking like, so having a broad look at how we're looking in a district of 20,000 to 21,000 children, 27 schools, what did we say was being driven, how many thou, 663,218 miles driven, 19,780 routes? I mean, the fact that you have managed to go from 54% at the start of a school year down to 4% as of October 14th, that's pretty impressive, so I appreciate the data. Thank you.
You are welcome. Any other questions?
No question, just, this was gr, wonderful data, as you stated. I just would like our neighbors and community to understand that it all could change based on the morale of our drivers, and so it's important that, as a community, we respect and thank bus drivers, coordinators, and everybody else that works in the Transportation Department. And importantly, our building principals do a good job of making sure that they communicate any changes in bus loop activity, or pickup times, or whatever, to make sure that the bus drivers are included, and try to eliminate any frustration that might come from drivers, because if you can imagine driving 600,000 miles in Boone County traffic in the mornings, and in the afternoons, in between parent pickup, and all the other things that happen on our Boone County roads, it's, it's important to note at least how frustrated I would be if I had to make those drives. So, thank you again for the data, and the transportation team as well.
And, and we would point out that, you, you know, many of us are late periodically because of traffic, and so, so there's, 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 we just have to realize that, given the traffic in Boone County, these are pretty amazing statistics. And also, since you did want to compare to the airline industry, I think in many cases, they consider anything like 14 minutes or less, like, is considered on time. So if we, if we went by the airline terminology-
We'd be golden.
We would be golden. So again, thanks for the transparency and all the details. I know that you and Mr. Greer, and many people in the Transportation Department, put a lot of work into that, so it's very helpful, and as Board Member Wolf pointed out, it paints a complete different picture than the narrative we occasionally hear when we, when we focus on a sample size of one, so thank you. All right, and with that, I conclude my comments for tonight.
Chair Parks, I would like to, to move Item CCC to New Business.
All right. Board Member Maddox is requesting to move Item CCC, the Memorandum of Understanding with Pathfinder Counseling Services, to New Business, which will become Item E. All right. No? Yep, all right, so we're gonna move on to Item Seven, everyone's favorite part of the agenda, I think. Audience of citizens, the Board welcomes the opportunity to hear from the community and inform the Board of your views on matters before the Board. Please keep in mind that the Board of Education Agenda is set, and by statute, the Board can only discuss the items that are present on the agenda. The Board cannot legally, nor would the Board, discuss an issue specific to an employee, a student, in respect to privacy. These meetings are streamed live on YouTube. Please keep your comments respectful. If you have a concern that you would like a response from the administration, feel free to leave your information with Eric Ball. Keep the comments to two minutes, so that all wish to speak may speak, the gift-giving of time to another person, I prefer you not do that. With that being said, we had two sign-in sheets, and I'm looking at the names and kind of guessing that they might have been mixed up, so one says, "Are you a college student?" I'm gonna go with Ms. Sean Mall is not. All right, so on the right sign-in sheet, we have first, Carrie Judd. And if you would, just state your name for the record, make sure I got it right, because I usually don't.
Yes, I am Carrie Judd. I'm a teacher, been a teacher in Boone County since 1999. So I'm here to talk about the moral instruction policy. I hope you vote against it. I feel like this would be very disruptive to our school day, to have kids released an hour a week. The policy says they would be released and back to campus in an hour. If you've ever taught in a school, they don't just magically get on that bus, there's a whole lot more time that would be taken out from them leaving their classes, going to their lockers, checking out, checking back in, reversing the whole thing. So that right there would be very disruptive to our school day. On top of that, I have my notes here, I was also told that, you know, this year, it's an hour. It was an hour in Ohio, and now this year, it's two. So I feel like if we let this in, it's only gonna keep expanding and expanding, taking away from our instructional minutes. And I am curious about the instructional minutes. If we take that hour away, that 60 minutes, are we gonna put that 60 minutes back into the schedule elsewhere? Because during that 60 minutes, that's like non-instructional minutes, according to the law, and I believe the policy, no new material can be introduced to the students that are left behind. Which brings me to another thing that was said, was this, you know, it's parents' rights to have moral instruction, and you are correct, it is. But I don't think it should impede the other parents of all the rest of the cool kids left in that school building, who cannot learn anything new for that one hour a week. And there are other options, these companies, these, that have buses ready in pre-enrollment, you know, why don't they work with the schools and do an after-school program, you know, like the karate bus does? Comes and gets the kids after school, they could still have their moral instruction, it would be helpful to parents, it wouldn't disrupt our school day. So I would hope that you would vote against having this policy. Thank you.
Next on the list is Kim Deal.
Hi, I'm Kim Deal. I've taught in Boone County Schools for 16 years. I'm currently at Ackerman Middle. I'm gonna mirror what Carrie said. I think this would be, I just heard about this today, and I was so upset, I said, "I have to come and speak about this," and all the teachers I talked to throughout the day didn't know about it. They don't know. They were incensed, they were flabbergasted that we were even considering something that would so disrupt the school day. Our classes are not one hour long, they're a little shorter than that, so you're taking more than an hour, the time getting on and off the bus, all those things. And then, you know, they have to have lunch, so if we do it in the middle of the day, we have to come in and figure out how those kids are gonna have lunch. Then also, you've added a big field trip to the day. So if you've ever taught school, it's very disruptive to have all the commotion, all the excitement, all that going on. And then you have the kids staying back, who, you know, are we supposed to remediate them? What are we supposed to do, keep them in this holding pattern? And I wonder about the legal implications of that for the parents who are, their children are being deprived of educational opportunities at school. So I think there's a lot to discuss here. I don't think people are informed about it. I talked to a lot of people this afternoon and this evening, a lot of retired teachers, a lot of people, and they do- and they do not know about this. And I think they're just as concerned as I am. So I hope you'll vote no.
Thank you. All right. So that was all the names on the speaking list. But I'll just say, if you want to speak on the audience of citizens, you're welcome to it.
I'm Sean Mall, not a college kid.
All right.
Oh, I could be though. Right, good evening, board members. I have been attending these meetings for years. And whenever one of our elected representatives decides to show up and speak, they always complain about how our schools should really get back to the basics, like when they were kids, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Yet they go to Frankfurt and pass legislation in direct opposition of that very thing. If we want increased learning opportunities for our kids, which will in turn increase their scores, then why are we removing them from the classroom for non-fundamental learning? Allowing instructional time during the school day to be replaced with non-core activities is inconsistent with the legislature's own public comments. Our district must protect instructional time. This morality clause creates a policy which weakens that protection. Let's also take into account the unnecessary risk to our student's safety. Who is transporting these kids? Well, they have car seats for elementary school kids to use. What if there's an accident? What if there's traffic and it takes two hours to get back to the school? Are those students tardy? Does this mean other kids in the building must have their learning time docked even further because they aren't allowed to continue their regular learning while the other kids are out? What if a kid gets sick? Where does a parent pick up their kid? Does the puking kid get back on a bus to go back to a school? Because that doesn't seem logical either. There are too many ways this ends badly, too many unknowns, too many missed opportunities for actual learning. School, as stated by our elected officials, is for reading, writing, and math. Having morals are great. I have them, I teach them to my daughter at home, as it should be. That is my job as a parent, not the schools. And I hope you'll vote no on this policy. Thank you.
Amber Hoffman?
Hello.
I just guessed.
My name is Amber Hoffman. I'm also not a college student. So this is also about the moral instruction policy. I'm going to ask that you vote no as well. While moral instruction policy may sound good, I am curious as to the following. Whose moral guidance will be allowing, will we be allowing in the schools? Which organizations will be permitted to participate in this program? Which religious organizations will be permitted? And if so, which religion? How will you determine which organizations will be denied access? And is there a specific set of criteria that these organizations need to meet? And if so, what is it? Again, while I believe a strong moral framework is imperative for our students, I do not believe the place is during the school hours. Boone County kids already have limited amount of time for educational and learning opportunities. And in addition, I believe there is no way to implement this project, or this program without disenfranchising certain Boone County kids. If the policy allows children one hour to travel, participate in moral instruction, and then return to school, children attending Boone County High School will have access to a much larger range of organizations than kids attending Ryle or Cooper High School, unless the goal is to only allow kids access to churches during school hours. With all of these unknown elements, I worry that this policy will open this district up for a myriad of lawsuits. And I do believe this district has shown that its willing, its willingness and desire to keep Boone County kids healthy, happy, and morally responsible. I do not believe this moral instruction policy is the proper path to accomplish this. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I'm assuming almost everyone else is on the right list. Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight. Recommended action consent agenda items A through Triple G, with the exception of Triple C, which has been moved to new business. Dr. Housewald?
Yes, thank you Chairman Parks. I would recommend the board approve the recommended action consent agenda items. As you stated, A through Triple B and Triple D through Triple G is presented with the treasurer's report by Ms. Katie Noonan. I believe Ms. Noonan will now give the treasurer's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Housewald. The adjusted cash balance for the month of October was $41,257,515. Total receipts this month were $58.6 million and our total expenditures were $21.4 million, for a net decrease, or increase in cash of $37.2 million. The balance on hand at the end of the month was $78,472,539. Some notable items this month are that we received $61.9 million in general property tax, of which $14.9 was restricted to the building fund. We also received 3.1, or 3.8 million in occupational tax and 2.8 million in utility taxes. Our debt service payments this month were $1.75 million.
Any, um, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through Triple G, with the exception of Triple C? Do I have a motion?
I second it.
Any discussion or questions?
What was that debt service payment amount? I'm sorry, I was writing and didn't hear you clearly.
$1.75 million. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, move forward with a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to Agenda Item Ten, Item A. Recommended action, new business, item twenty-six, twenty-seven? Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Nine.
Thank you. Who did you end up item nine? Recommended old business, old business, item A. Dr. Housewald?
Uh, yes, thank you Chairman Parks. Tonight you have before you a recommendation regarding old business, item A, board policy 08.135. This is a second reading and comes to, um, as original drafted by KSBA and on behalf of the, and reviewed by the attorney. And this is truly privileged of the board with a recommendation to pass.
Do I have a motion to approve old business, item A, board policy 08.135? The second reading, as recommended.
I do have a point of discussion for this. I don't know when you want to, when we're supposed to do that.
Need a motion first?
Okay, then I motion.
Motion Ms. Wolf. All right, discussion?
Okay, I want to make sure that, um, I have a thing with, if you vote against something, that tell why. And I'm going to make sure I explain why I'm voting against this, um, policy. Because as we review this proposed moral instruction policy, I want to begin with the most important point, that the logistics simply do not work. On paper, the policy sounds straightforward, one hour a week, one designated day, and a district posted calendar. But in reality, this policy was not written with an understanding of how schools operate and certainly not with the scale and complexity of Boone County schools in mind. Boone County schools operates 27 sites, that's elementary, middle, and high schools, and no two buildings run on the same schedule. Not even two elementary schools, not even two middle schools, not even two high schools. Every single school adjusts its master schedule every year to meet student needs, staffing assignments, intervention blocks, specials, rotations, dual-credit course offerings, CTE pathways, and transportation realities. This means that under this policy, this district would have to reevaluate 27 different schedules every year to determine where this designated one-hour block would realistically fit. Because schedules shift annually, we would be resolving the same puzzle every single year, along with other puzzles that are placed in the laps of public education due to poorly-written legislation. This is not a one-time adjustment. This is a permanent, annual labor burden, a logistical treadmill with no finish line. So for our elementary schools, managing the hour is difficult. Middle and high schools, where students in dual-credit courses, internships, labs, AP classes, electives, and career pathways, it's nearly impossible. These are not non-core throwaway classes. These are college prep and college prep, career prep essentials. And releasing students during the day would mean pulling them out of study halls, tutoring, group projects, lab work, AP reviews, CTE hands-on training, arts and enrichment courses, counseling and mentoring. And it's also an average of 26 hours per year. More than four full school days of lost time, 2.8% of the entire school year gone. No superintendent, principal, counselor, or teacher would ever voluntarily remove 2.5% of a student's instructional time and call it harmless, because that's not how education works. And to receive this moral education, moral instruction, participating students must leave campus. A one-hour limit includes travel time, realistically leaving 20 to 30 minutes for instruction, with the disruption stretching far longer for both students who leave and those who remain. And anyone who knows the size of Boone County would laugh at this because it takes the average Boone County resident a solid 20 to 30 minutes to get anywhere in the county outside of their own neighborhood grocery store. And that is on a good day. So when you factor in loading and unloading buses and vans, it's going to take longer. And every building also must create a plan to supervise non-participating students in non-credit enrichment courses, which includes certified staffing, classroom space, adjusted supervision schedules, modified special rotations. And this is not a small weekly shift. It's a weekly interruption baked into school year calendar. And let's keep in mind that the parents of the students not participating in off-site moral instruction programs are not consenting to this disruption. This means that potentially one parent can impact the disruption of the school day for many students whose parents are not given a say in this. And the policy indicates that the students attending moral instruction will be excused for the hour, but attendance is tracked minute by minute. And if a student returns late, even one minute, infamous campus, infinite campus will record a tardy or absence. Those accumulate and can contribute, and can trigger truancy warnings. So a traffic delay or transportation issues puts family at risk for receiving truancy notices for an absence the statute would claim is present. So additionally, as a student is late, are the kids attending moral instruction in a holding pattern until the student returns to school? Is this a policy conflict with no clear resolution? There's also no definition on what moral instruction is. We are not equipped to declare which groups meet an undefined moral threshold. This is not the work of public education. This is personal and family-level decision-making. And parents already have these opportunities on evenings, weekends, through their faith communities. Rejecting the policy doesn't mean rejecting moral instruction. It just keeps it where it belongs outside the school day. The policy requires quarterly reporting to KDE on every application, every approval or denial, and every justification. Even if we deny all requests, the reporting obligation remains. This is an ongoing annual administrative work with no educational benefit. This proposed policy mirrors the weaknesses of the statute behind it. It is logically unsustainable. It is operationally disruptive. It is administratively burdensome. And it forces the district into undefined moral abdication. And it risks constitutional legal consequences. Our responsibility is to protect instructional time, maintain neutrality, and preserve equitable access to education across all 27 of our schools, each with its own schedule and diverse needs. And for these reasons, I cannot support adopting this policy as written. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I was, I just brought up KRS 158.200, which is created this policy, or the need for having a policy. And I think there's a lot of misconception. I think as legislation comes and goes, to me, this is one of those that sounded good when they were sitting around talking about it. It sounded noble. It sounded like no one would be against this until you try to implement it in the third-largest school district in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. If we were down the road at Beechwood Independent, this would be a no-brainer. They'd just go down to the firehouse and some vendor would come in and do the instruction and it would be no big deal. And I agree, Mrs. Wolf, if you say you're against this policy, you're going to be labeled that, well, you must not have any morals and that has nothing to do with this. This goes back to what Boone County Schools is here to do, and that's educate our children, as was stated eloquently, in the basics to get them college, career, and life-ready. I raised my boys and I attended to their moral instruction through the faith-based organizations that we belong to. I had them in Sunday School, I had them at church, they were in youth groups. Yes, they disagreed going to choir and having to be in programs and plays and, and, and do that kind of thing. But they went anyway because that was the way that we brought them up to have their faith-based fundamentals, which, once they reached adulthood, I stepped back and you make your, your, your choice for yourself, because that's my job as a parent. I think that this is something that probably should come back up again to the General Assembly, because the 158-200, Section 1 says that we may provide an opportunity for pupils to attend moral instruction in their jurisdiction. And I focus on the word "may," that's permissive. You don't have to do this. And I, I think our board attorney probably would disagree with me and, and we know this is going to end up in the office of the OAG anyway, I feel. And it says, "If you do it, then you have to do it this way." Not that you have to do it. If you choose to do it, you have to do it starting with Section 2, subsections A, B, C, D, on and on and on and on and on. I firmly believe that we're one of the few districts, as we announced a few months back, that didn't suffer the learning loss that other districts did. And to accomplish that in a district of our size is a testament to the quality educators and administrators and support staff that we have in each and every building across our district. And the fact that some of these people have been teaching for decades and decades and decades. And I loved what Ms. Edwards said, "If you're enjoying what you do, don't let anyone tell you you have to stop doing it." So... I'm a, I am a faith-based person. I never make any bones about that. It's what gets me through every day of my life. But that's my personal decision. This belongs in the hands of parents in their own homes. I don't think it belongs during the school day where we're struggling enough to meet all of the mandates, trying to close the achievement gaps for our marginalized and underserved populations, our English language learners. We don't have enough time in the day already. So my personal preference is to not support this and to work collectively to find after-school opportunities so that those parents who do choose this for their children do that. And then I suggest that you go to your state legislators and you tell them, "This sounds great, but in a district our size, it's, it's, it's a monster to try to administrate." And I, I don't think it's fair to the students being put on hold. And I agree, it's, it's not going to happen in an hour in Boone County. I can't get from Florence to Union and sometimes and back in an hour. So, um, and I think that there's other ways to do this that could provide what everyone wants to try to accomplish. But I think our school day needs to remain our school day. I would just, I would just like to say, whether we agree with it or not, it is the law right now. So that's just my comment.
May I add something else? As someone who signed up for six APs this May, I think that this would be very detrimental, lost instruction time. And as well as there's other ways to morally instruct kids. Uh, I know at Connor alone, we have something called Connor Achievement Program, which is about 50 minutes in our day where we can go to clubs and such. And we have a fellowship of Christian athletes there. And many organizations like that can come into the school and form things like that if that moral instruction is wanted. And it would be a lot more efficient for the county.
Thank you for that. Let's, let's, what is, what is the law? Is, are we being directed by Frankfurt to pass this policy as read today?
No. This, there is nothing in this statute that requires-
This, there is nothing in this statute that requires the passage of a policy. What you as a board have to do is, according to an Attorney General opinion that was rendered two or three weeks ago, all the board has to do is consider every written request that comes. So the policy is something that KSBA initially crafted, because every board has had the opportunity to offer in-house moral instruction for as long as I can remember. This amendment created the language that says, once someone, a provider submits a written request, the board has to take that request and make a vote as to whether or not they're going to approve that person, or that group, or that whomever, or deny it. So the policy is intended to create neutral framework for what those, what those requests are assessed by. So no, there is nothing in the statute that actually requires the passage of a policy, which is unlike some other statutes that we deal with, where it says, the board must pass a policy. This is a recommendation to provide a neutral framework to assess moral instruction, should the board take that up and approve some of these providers. It's just providing, again, neutral framework, because moral instruction is not, it's not defined, we don't know what it is. I don't think anyone in this room, certainly not myself, is comfortable deciding what moral instruction means. Even the Attorney General was not willing to put a definition to that tagline. So that leaves these boards, you all and anyone else in the state, to say, what is this and what does this mean? So the policy was just something crafted with the assistance of KSBA, as well as the hard-working people in this district trying to figure out how to reconcile this new law that the General Assembly has thrust upon the district. And this is just a solution that was, was created.
So if we don't have the policy, then what happens?
Then every individual written instruction, or I'm sorry, moral instruction provider application, and we do have one pending, that will be put on the board regardless of what you all decide to do this evening, they just come one by one. And you approve or deny at your discretion.
On each board agenda, or?
Yes.
And then approve what?
Whether or not you're going to allow them to provide moral instruction. So the way that the statute is written, if you look at, so you look at 158-200, as Ms. Byrd pointed out, subsection A of that policy is very permissive. It says, the board, Boards of Education may provide an opportunity. Okay. So number two, subsection A, local boards of education shall allow pupils to be excused for up to one hour each, each week, which shall include travel to and from, to attend a district-approved request for a moral instruction offering. This is where the really tricky part comes into play, because you only have an obligation to permit students to be excused for one hour to attend moral instruction for district-approved moral instruction providers. So what we know is that, a couple of things. One, when a written submission is made to you all, you have to take it up and decide whether or not that person, that entity, that whomever, is going to be approved. There are baseline qualifications codified into the statute. They have to provide insurance, they have to provide a transportation plan, et cetera, et cetera. But there's nothing in the statute that actually requires you to approve them, even if they meet that baseline threshold. So you, as a board, have discretion, approve or deny, as long as you deny for a nondiscriminatory and non-arbitrary reason, according to the Attorney General's office. Those are really the only things we know. And that's not a whole lot. So your looks of confusion are justified.
One of the things, thank you for explaining that. One of the things that's super troubling to, I think, almost everyone is that, you know, I, I think parents should have the right to have their children do whatever they want for, you know, as far as, whatever moral instruction is, whatever that is. But if they want to do that, that's fine. Does it say in the law that the other remaining people in the class can't do class?
Yes. Well, it, it requires the remaining students in the school to participate in enrichment activities, which essentially means non-core instruction. So you're looking at, your recess would be a time that students could go to moral instruction, where the rest of the school goes to recess. Your, like, homeroom times, like jam sessions, or what they call it at the various schools.
So what other club or thing exists? Like, I'm just thinking of my own experience. If I take Cameron to, I don't know, a therapy appointment or something like that, the other kids still get to do their class. What other, is there, what about football? Does, if you have a football meeting, do the other kids have to wait around for the football players to come back? Is there any other, I guess my question is, not a trick question, is there any other example of, wait, we're missing one, we have to hold on for a while until the one comes back type of scenario in public schools?
Not required by statute in this way.
Would they be doing it during specials? When would, when would they do it?
So the way that the district, the district has worked, you know, to the district staff members that have worked on this, it has been, it has been a giant puzzle piece trying to figure out how one would even logistically implement this in the least disruptive way, as has been said exhaustively this evening. There's no way to get around the disruption, but to do it the least disruptive way. The one thing that, when you're dealing with situations like this in statutes, the holes that we can play with are here, what we call time, place, manner restrictions. So here, the district has come up with a plan that at beginning of each school year, every school, should the board approve this moral instruction policy, each school would designate their one hour. If someone wants to provide moral instruction, they would have to accommodate their plan to fit into the one hour of instruction that each individual school is designated. So that's not something statutorily required, but it's not something statutorily prohibited. So that would be a time, place, manner restriction that the district could implement to try and curb the disruption at the school level.
So... Like, let's say it's the last hour of the day on a Friday, and there's one student in a class of, what's our class size at, in middle school right now?
Twenty-nine.
All right, twenty-nine.
I mean, that's more than.
And then, so the twenty-nine students would do some other activity, like, like art, or study hall, which, I mean, I don't know how much useful study hall is, but I guess it, people like it, right? Or some other activity, right? They would do something else, because?
Non-credit enrichment courses. Or participate in educational activities not required in the regular curriculum.
Why is that?
8200, Section 6.
There are no definitions affiliated with this statute. Most of the time when you get Kentucky Revised Statutes, especially in Chapter 158, which largely deals with school districts, there is a definition section, but none of the terms used in this statute are defined anywhere.
Well, I wouldn't, I, and I guess this is a question for anybody. Why would my choice to sign my child up for a class or club affect all the other students? Why, I mean, what, is there, has anyone heard of the reason why it was written that way? Was there supplementary language issued by anyone that says, why it is that if I chose to do a provider, a vendor, a program, or whatever, for the one hour, what is it, a week, one hour a week, that, that, that would then affect the choice and experience of the other students in the class? Has anyone written about this in the, in any other fashion, that we might be able to understand better about why that would be?
My understanding was that it's in more of an instruction to misaliment.
Thank you.
Well, what about specials? I mean, could they do it during art or something like that?
Isn't art important?
Well, it is important. They're all important, I agree. Okay.
Art is still curriculum.
I agree. I'm sorry.
Well, then, then.
So is music.
To the, to the... So I, you know, I've, I've been, just for my other board members, back and forth with this, because it's also my understanding, from talking to our legal counsel, that if we don't follow the very vague language, that we open ourselves up to potential litigation by not having, not approving vendors, I guess would be the, we can have the policy or not have the policy, but if we turn down a vendor for an arbitrary reason, which would seem arbitrary if we didn't have a policy, is that correct?
As a general rule of thumb, I would say that this board is never going to act arbitrarily, and no one will ever get legitimate grounds to sue the board for any decision that it decides to make here.
Right.
But the reality is, is that anyone can sue you for anything they decide they don't like.
There have been vendors rejected, I know of, by two districts. Have they been sued yet?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Well, we would be the first, because we are Boone County. I mean, let's face it.
And to that end, you normally would go after, if you, if you were in that situation with any subject, you would, you would start with the largest of the people, right?
If, if I had the crystal ball to know why plaintiffs do what they do?
I hear that.
I'd be in a lot better position than I am.
Did the districts, the two that have turned down the vendor, did they have policies in place?
No. They have, they elected to do it on a application-by-application basis. There is only, at this point, one provider that I have, that I have personally seen, and I've been trying to keep an eye on it. There's only one provider that I've seen actually submit applications, because this is, as you all have probably seen, a logistical undertaking to even try to do this.
Right, yeah.
So, but no. It's not been a policy consideration.
If we were to have the policy, we still, we would still be approving or denying the vendors.
Correct, yes.
We're just, the policy is in place.
The policy gives you the framework, I guess, right?
Correct.
And, and the, we have had conversations with principals who, again, as you might guess, don't, don't love it, but we also want the logistical pieces, but we want to try, we're always going to comply with the law. So we have had conversations with the principals about if you had to have an hour, you know, what would that look like, in case we are, the board decides to do one on a, and it never, they would never decide something arbitrarily, but, you know, and so, the reality is, and this is privileged of the board, but the policy approval or rejection, I mean, I know this came from KSBA to put some guardrails on it, does not limit the board's decision on a case-by-case basis. Is that correct?
Well, correction to that. KSBA created a sample policy, because they, their interpretation, because I had this conversation with the KSBA Board Attorney, is that because it says "may do it."
Privilege of the word.
You can't really create a policy on "may." So they had some sample languages, language that they pulled from other areas that had similar policies, but there was no recommendation. It's like, here's some samples. You don't have to do this. So we're, we're not going to create a specific policy. If they ever come back and change that language to, you shall do this, you have to do it, and do it this way, then KSBA would draft a policy.
But the question is, again, whether you approve the policy or not, does not eliminate the second tier of this, that if you get individual proposals, they still, you, it doesn't require you to approve them or require you to not approve them. It doesn't change the second step to this. That's correct?
Correct. It doesn't change the second step. It just serves as a precursor for other things.
But if we don't approve the policy tonight, let's say this, this vote fails on approving the policy, and we get a vendor request that we figure out, they promise they'll have the kids in and out, you know, everything's going to be rainbows and unicorns, and it's going to work, and everybody's going to love it, and parents who want it will be happy, the parents whose kids are in school will be happy. Would we then have to come back and adopt the policy, or would we just review it like anything else?
So how it would, I envision would come up, is that if the board rejects the policy this evening, then any written provider request that we receive would have to come on the agenda, because according to the Attorney General's office, it does. But it would be a recommendation from the district to disapprove for the reason set forth via tonight's meeting, as just a logistical consideration that was not made provider-specific, so that we have a record of something to point to, to say, it failed as a whole because of the logistical implications with the district, therefore recommended to deny. But it would still come on, yes.
Might I add something? So we were previously talking about our transportation issues, and an average of missing seven minutes a school per day over one hundred seventy-five days, that is one thousand two hundred twenty-five minutes, or about twenty hours and twenty-five minutes. And adding another transportation issue into the school day could result in even more missed time, which is even more missed instructional time with those core classes, whether being math, reading, or science. That could be really detrimental to just students' learnings over twelve years in general.
So... If we don't have the policy, and we get a provider request, do we then still get to dictate the hour that this takes place? Like, in other words, the policy, as it reads, states a few things. Each school will designate one hour during one day of the school week reserved. Would we still then have to set that per provider if we approved a provider?
So I, I want to make sure I understand your question. So you're saying, the policy fails tonight, and then you later get a provider application that the board votes to approve. Do you still retain the discretion to impose time, place, manner restrictions upon that?
Or can they just submit a request and say, we want to do it on Monday morning from nine to ten?
No. I, I mean, I, the time, place, manner restrictions are something that are, again, the holes in this that we can use to try and manage disruption. You don't lose that because you get rid of the policy. That's why we're having this conversation now, though, is to establish that this is a consideration long before anyone submits a provider request and it's individually assessed.
Well, another wrinkle in the works. It's scary when I think. Since the site-based councils schedule the school day, that's within their roles and responsibilities, correct?
Correct.
So that's why they are deciding which hour of which day of the week it's going to be possibly permitted for students to leave and go have their moral instruction. Is that really, is it, is it a board decision because of approving a vendor contract, because of 158-200? Why is this a site-based council decision?
Because the General Assembly has made it a board decision. I, I mean, this is, this is the epitome.
Do they understand the roles and responsibilities between boards and site-based councils?
I would not be so bold as to assume what the General Assembly does or does not know about the operation of schools.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I've just, I've had an epiphany. I mean.
That's a good point, though. I mean, is it, is it our time to give away?
Not according to site-based law, right? I mean, am I, like?
KIRA would certainly have a role in this, but this is, this is a very interesting cross-section of something that I know you have probably heard me sing about at many, many, many a board meeting, that when you look at a statute in the way that you've got three main chapters that affect schools and their operations under the Kentucky Revised Statute, and very often, you find they conflict with each other, and it's anyone's best guess how that would come out on top in a court. But yes, your argument is very valid, that it's not even the board's time to give away under KIRA. But if we're looking at this statute, it says board.
Technically, if we passed a policy, we could be sued by one of our own councils.
I will again note that I don't think this board is going to do anything that would get us sued with a legitimate lawsuit. But sure, anyone can sue you for anything.
I have a question, just a what-if. If we did, for some reason, approve a, a vendor down the road, because everything just worked out perfect, and we did approve, and that group was just for one certain school, they were just wanting to come in, because, say, they were close by that school, so that way they'd get enough time, then would all the other schools still have to implement that time restriction?
No. We are choosing to not interpret it that way, but a court could tell me that's wrong later.
So you could have one school, one vendor come in and do within one school, maybe? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that was my question. I mean, I don't, right, yeah. Wanting to know, do, if the, a company just wants to work with one school, does all the schools have to implement the policy?
That's a really good question, Board Member Young, because as we interpret it, going even deeper, that should we be required to do this, and should the board approve, and should they approve an agreement between one vendor and one school? If there were fifteen kids in this program, and it impacted fifteen classrooms, we don't interpret it that it would impact the other classrooms, if that makes sense, or the other schools.
Because I would.
So, my concern is, is if we don't have to implement it, it's a catch-22, then how is that fair to the students at the school that it is implemented in for the loss of educational time when the other schools are not losing that education time? Not saying that I want to make it district-wide. I don't. I mean, there's no good answer. I just didn't know if you had an answer.
It's anyone's best guess. I think that it's not fully defined. It just says, "A pupil who does not participate in a moral instructuring offering shall remain in school." It's not "the" school, so it's not school-specific. We have chosen to believe that that would be a, I'm going to use the term reasonable very loosely here, but reasonable interpretation of that to limit it to the school level. But, I mean, the statute is not clear. There is a, I'm not, again, I'm not going to say it reasonable in the way that I would like to, but there is an interpretation of this that someone could argue with me about later that says a pupil means a pupil in the district. I don't know.
Or at least within that one school.
Yeah, there are many different meanings that could be affixed to that.
The three classrooms that may be affected, to me, I read this, and I know I'm not the attorney up here, but...
Well, the attorney doesn't know either, so by all means.
And I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn last night, so, you know, I read this that this paralyzes the whole school. That's my interpretation.
Now, whether it might paralyze the whole district, I don't know. But as we move towards more...
It would definitely paralyze the school that...
Yeah, but if it, let's say it happens at, I'm going to pick on Steeplechase because Lisa's in the room. Let's say it happens at Steeplechase. So, then Mann and Urbanbeck and the others 15 elementary schools get their full instructional day.
Exactly, that was my...
And as we try to implement district curriculum and get everybody working at the same pace and lined up, so if someone leaves Steeplechase and goes to Urbanbeck or vice versa, when you walk into a third-grade classroom, you're right on target. This would disrupt everybody with that. We would go back to being a district of schools instead of a school district. And I've been fighting that for 31 years.
What? Has there been another example of a policy that we have may, shall pass that we don't know the rules or reasons behind the idea of the policy? Like, in other words, a policy that we're just sort of guessing at all of these various things that are brought up? How it will affect our students, how it will affect our curriculum time? Is it legal? Is it not legal? Does it put us against the care of language? Is this a normal thing that happens with?
Disagreement amongst interpretation of statutes is why I am employed. But no, this is by far the most confusing one that we've had, in my opinion, in a while.
Well, especially so if the OHE won't even really just give a clear-cut interpretation and say, this is it.
Yes.
That's very troubling to me.
What, and I'm sorry for all the questions, but like I said, for me personally, I've been on, I understand both. Yeah, and I really don't, I'm adverse to spending taxpayer dollars defending lawsuits. But if I'm a parent, what's my recourse if my child's time has been taken by some other parent's decision?
They would not have recourse against the Boone County Public School District. I don't know what their recourse is. But it's not against the Boone County Public School District.
I could call my school board member. But, and seriously, though, I mean, I'm trying to think, so if, we have opt-out policies for a variety of things, right?
For maybe instructional lessons.
Excuse me. If I opt out of this survey, the other kids still get to take the survey. If I opt my child out of reading the book that's assigned to a class, the other students still get to read the book. Is that right, for the most part? If my child, if I opt out of using the Boone County Schools Transportation Services, the other kids still get to use the transportation services. So... I mean, I don't know of any other example in which my family's choice would impact everyone else's choice. Is there, I mean, that's the part I struggle with, is I'm an active, you know, I've got on this board because I think parents have a right and a choice to, you know, I always say, these are our schools, right? These are our public schools. We own them, whether you have children here or not. If you're a resident of Boone County, these are your schools. But if we have this particular situation, which I get the policy is just setting up a framework. Later on, we would have a provider. But then, for those other, in the example we used earlier, 30-something children, it doesn't become their school. It becomes, they don't have the choice because the one family chose to do the program or whatever. You know, and that's the part that I'm really struggling with, is what other, what other, you know, instances as one family gets to decide what the rest of the class does for that hour? You know, and that's the tough part for me. I mean, does that make sense? Maybe that doesn't make sense. And I get what you're saying, I think, is that this, these are great ideas, but this just sets up a policy, right? That's all we're doing here, is setting up a policy. We're not approving or disproving any vendors or anything like that. We'll have to do that anyway, regardless of whether we have a policy or not a policy. But because the language says we can't turn down a vendor arbitrarily, it helps the school district be able to have language that says why we turned down a potential vendor, because they didn't meet the guidelines of the policy. Is that correct?
This policy, at its most basic core, is a management of expectations, that if you are going to submit an application, and if this board is inclined to permit moral instruction to occur within the district, for vendors to understand, these are the expectations of you, this is how it's going to be implemented, and if you don't like that you have one specific hour at a school that you have to accommodate to, you can't accuse us of doing it for any kind of nefarious reason, because this has been the expectation since day one. This is a management of expectations that provides a neutral framework should the board elect to permit moral instruction in Boone County Public School District.
Well, and really, we don't have the option to permit or not permit. We have the option to permit a specific vendor or not.
You have the option to approve vendors or not.
Right, okay. So, just to be clear, we don't have the option for the approving the moral instruction itself. That's done in the legislation. We have the option of approving the vendor and then laying out how that might incorporate into the SBDM School Day.
It's a chicken and an egg kind of conversation.
Well, and let me get to, I guess, let me get to the point. If we don't have the policy and vendor is late returning the students to the school, in our policy, it says that that cancels the whole deal because they're late, right? Or they, it triggers, triggers an automatic revocation of the approval status of the provider.
Yes.
If we don't have the policy, like this policy that we're voting on tonight, if we don't have the policy and we said to the vendor, well, you're late, we're going to revoke your approval status, then that could be seen as an arbitrary revocation because we don't have a policy. Is that correct?
This goes back to, anyone can sue you for anything, and yes, someone...
I hear that, I know, but in this particular situation, why do we need the policy if everyone can sue us for everything? What specifically does it mean?
It is just to manage expectations. And so, it provides that preemptive neutral framework that undermines a vendor's ability to come back and said, oh, you revoked my status because you just don't like what we are teaching students. Or, oh, you don't like, you're revoking my status because of X, Y, and Z reason that someone can fabricate as arbitrary or discriminatory. But again, there's nothing that requires you to have it. Not having this policy would still, in my opinion, give you the legal grounds to revoke someone's status for X, Y, and Z reason, one being returning students late and therefore incurring unexcused absences. The policy is just a management of expectations, but you are not required to have it.
So, without the policy, would that make it easier or harder? So, in that example, you know, it says it's, you know, it's revocation if they're late. But without the policy, then, would we as the admin bring that back to the board saying, hey, you approved this group, but this is the times they've been late, these are the disruptions? So, I guess, let me ask a very general question. Does the policy make it easier for the board or harder for the board to say yes or say no or manage this? That's what I'm trying to understand. And the admin, does it make it easier or harder for us? Because I keep going, I'm going back and forth on what I'm hearing.
It depends. I don't know how to say it other than it depends.
Well, did you not earlier say that if we don't have a policy, that that's going to show the attitude of the board that for all of the reasons we've discussed about the disruption to the day, the timeframe, what happens if they come back late, what happens if there's a wreck, what happens at this? That that in and of itself would establish a precedent if we got a vendor contract and we looked at it and it didn't seem logical or reasonable or doable, and we said, we're not going to approve this, because when we denied having the policy, we said A, B, C, D, E, all the way through triple Z.
So...
Setting the groundwork for, again, expectations.
Yes, so rejecting the policy this evening, it would be, how I could see this coming up, that let's say the board rejected the policy this evening. Should a written application come through and be placed on another board agenda, there would be no need for discussion about that specific application, and instead, the recommendation from the district could come through that just said, for the reasons provided by the board during the November 13th, 2025 board meeting and the rejection of moral instruction policy, this too is denied for logistical reasons.
Okay, so, this is my question. Is this law or is it not law? Is this a law or is it not law?
Which part?
KRS 158.2? It says we may do this. It does not say we have to. It says we may.
Well, it doesn't require you to do something.
So, it's putting it out there to be optional. It's a statute that's optional.
The law requires that you contemplate moral instruction provider applications. That is what we know the law requires. The rest of it is open to interpretation due to some vagueness in the statute. So, the law requires the board to consider any moral instruction provider that submits a written application, and if it is approved, the law requires the district to provide one hour, up to one hour of excused absence for a student wishing to avail themselves of that moral instruction. But the law does not, according to the Attorney General's recent opinion, require you to approve any vendor as long as the denial is not for an arbitrary or discriminatory reason.
Okay. You got a question?
No, it's a call to question.
So... I guess it's still, it's still not exactly clear to me, maybe, well, I guess it doesn't matter if it's clear to anyone else. It's not clear to me. The, and I think I'm saying this in layman's terms, but the policy keeps us a little on the safer side as far as reasons vendors and others might complain if we revoke their status for whatever reason, all the things, A through Z, because we have a policy and they didn't follow the rules, basically. Is that the reason for, what's the reason for the policy itself?
Because if the board is going to approve moral instruction providers, this manages the expectations for everyone across the board should something happen that needs to revoke status or really just to provide that, just the framework for what the policy or what moral instruction is going to look like in the Boone County Public School District.
Could that not be built into a contract?
That was my question. I was wondering if that could be built into the MOUs.
Well...
With our handy-dandy addendum that talks about student privacy and all that.
So, here's the, here's kind of the tricky part, though. There's not necessarily anything in this statute that's going to require us to have an MOU with providers. It is an out-of-school, non-school-governed moral instruction. It only obligates the district to provide an excused absence hour. It's not someone we're entering into a contract with. It's not, they're not entities that we are having or exercising any control over. The only thing that the district does and is obligated to do under the law is if these baseline threshold requirements, as codified into 158-200, are met. They have the requisite insurance policy. They have the transportation plan. They have all of the other things that are required. If a provider is approved, a parent will say, okay, I would like for my child to attend this moral instruction offering at my child's school. They fill out the permission form, and then off they go, and the district says, okay. From the minute they've checked out, from the minute that they come back, if it's within 60 minutes, they have their excused absence.
So, this would be more like a field trip permission form versus a memorandum of understanding?
Good example, yes.
I don't know if that makes it any better.
So...
No, but it would require the background checks and all of that stuff, so that...
Yes. Yes, as a part of 158-200, any person at one of these, with one of these providers, if a provider is approved, one of the prerequisites before they're actually allowed to start taking students is that any person who interacts with the students has to undergo a can check and other background checks, similar to what we would...
Which they pay for.
Yeah, we pay nothing.
The law is not clear, but I believe we would be advancing that cost. I'm not sure. The law doesn't say.
Wait.
Of our General Assembly.
No, but if we had a policy, the policy states that the provider pays the charges for criminal background checks, right?
Yeah, we put that into the policy, but it's not codified in the statute.
So, in that particular case, if we don't have a policy, what happens?
We would just tell them they have to pay for it and see what happens.
So, if we, because I'm opposed, let me ask you, let me ask you a different question, I'm sorry. Because I'm opposed to interrupting the day of the fellow classmates, of anyone that chooses any club or moral instruction or whatever, to me, it makes no difference. One child in a class, let's call it two, choose something that then all the other children can't do class. Because I'm opposed to that, it really doesn't matter about the policy, because the policy isn't saying that we accept moral instruction or not. It's only building a framework for the providers that may apply to be providers in Boone County.
Sure.
In other words, it's not up to me, as a board member or a parent, to agree or disagree about the one student signs up and the 20 don't get to do class now, because that's in the law, right?
Correct.
We're not approving or disproving of that portion of this conversation.
Correct.
That's already been decided by our legislators. Is that correct? So, the policy really has nothing to do with the thing that our public spoke about today, about it would interrupt the school day and it would, all the things that I agree with. The, that's already done for us in Frankfurt. That part has been done, is that correct? Is that the way you understand it, Karen?
What about...
Well, I could throw another wrinkle into that works.
Please do.
Say you have four third-grade classrooms. You're saying that, or your interpretation is... You're saying that, or your interpretation is you've got two students that go out of Mrs. Smith's classroom and Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Green, they get to keep going. I don't read it that way because that's all third grade classrooms. So if you've got the, what my fear would be that if you've got, you know, two students out of one second grade classroom, the other three classrooms have to stop too because they're all doing the same instruction, probably same units and pacing and all that stuff at the same time.
But again, that's, that part's already been decided.
Right, that's, and I, and I, and I think it's unclear. I think that would be one good challenge is to have it decided. Is it just that one classroom? Is it the whole school? If you've only got one sixth grader that goes, does a whole sixth, seventh, and eighth grade get shut down? I think they do.
What about, says each school year prior to the beginning of school, each school will designate the time for this. So the schools have to go through that, that, each, each school has to carve out the time. And then what if there are no vendors? Do they still have to abide by that?
No.
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 But they have to go through the.
That just, so instead of a vendor coming, my understanding, and saying, we would like to do this at this time, this basically starts the conversation off. If a vendor comes and says, we'd like to work with you as an elementary school. We say, well, we have set this, no, there's no guarantees. You have to go through.
But they don't have to start, the schools don't have to start the school year on that.
No, they just have that, they have that hour, the worst case scenario.
Right.
That would be the hour.
Now, the other thing that I have a concern with in terms of the scheduling at the school level, and this happens a lot at elementary, especially if they have to restructure the school day at any point during the year and they're already obligated to this, does that keep them from being able to restructure the school day and then changing when that's available? Or do they have to keep that in place and then restructure around this? I mean, it's just an entire logistical nightmare. I just don't know how we do it with the real, reality of what we know happens in our schools. I can think of two schools right now where they've had to restructure at least part of their, like, fifth grade because of a teacher has, is out of town or a teacher gets unexpectedly sick or something like that. They have to restructure how they're doing stuff. I mean, my, my daughter was in fifth grade, my youngest, the teacher left the school and went to another job. They had to restructure the classrooms. So if they have to do that, there's that.
But if they don't have someone that's going, they don't have to restructure anything, right?
But we have to assume that they will.
Is there, is there? All right, uh, two, uh, couple of things. Why does, in our policy, we have written again that the pupil who does not participate in moral instruction offerings shall remain in school during the time when the instruction is being given and shall take non-credit enrichment courses or participate in educational activities not required in the regular curriculum. Why, why do we have to have that in our policy? If, if, is that, is that in our policy or am I reading this piece of paper wrong?
It just, it just came straight from the statute. I mean, I.
So why do we do, why, why don't we just have, um, not that sentence?
Required in the KRS. That, that's required.
Now, that's.
Right, but does that, does that have to be in our policy? They're not requiring a policy. In other words, if the, if the legislators, and I, and I believe, and I believe, I believe this is a bad, a badly written piece of legislation, and it deserves the time to be fixed. Do we then need to fix our own policy later? Because that's the crux of the issue. And so why would we resolidify the bad language by saying the same thing over again? Could we just get rid of that part of it? And if it, if it is ever changed, then we won't have to have this whole conversation again. And then I, I guess, um.
Olivia, I have a question, real quick. And it's probably the same question that's been asked before. But, and, and, you know, I hear a lot of board members really struggling with the disruption. But what, what I think some of us are struggling to understand is, does, does the policy help limit the ability to do this? To limit the disruption? In other words, does it set tighter guardrails so that it's, it's, you know, less of a disruption? Or, um, you know, that's if you pass it, you know, if you, if they pass this, does that give some conditions that would, would, would make sure that it's, it limits the disruption in compliance with the law? But then the other, the other way is to look at it is if this were to be voted down, would there be a way by which you could argue that because the board voted this down, it negates any proposal? Because I, I, I mean, there's a couple of ways to look at that. Um, how, I mean, does that make sense?
It, it doesn't negate the proposal because the AG opinion says that you, the board just can't refuse to, to take up these written, um, the written submissions. It just provides the framework for, you know, if the board is going to take up each individual, um, application, written application for moral instruction, this is providing the neutral framework that puts the board in a safe position to deny or approve any of those requests. But if, I, I, I'm not going to say that having or not having the policy doesn't make it easier or not. That's not my lane.
So if we have a situation where the board feels that they do not want to see disruptions to the school day and we can't, I mean, and we know that any policy put in front of us or any vendor put in front of us is going to do that, then it has to be a blanket yes or no based on that, if that's our concern. Because if we say yes to one and no to another, I think that creates a whole other issue. Cause we have to tell them why. Because that's what KDE has to receive. They have to receive reports saying why we denied a proposal.
And to be clear, the, the reporting requirement is statutory, like regardless of whether or not you have a policy, no policy, as soon as you receive one, like, we have to make that.
Oh, oh, of course, but I'm just saying in terms of consistency.
Sure.
We have to be consistent one way or the other. Cause if we say yes to one and no to another, it's going to open up some issues.
Well, we have to be consistent with every decision we make.
Exactly, but this.
And the number one focus is educating our students.
Exactly.
Period.
So that's kind of where I'm, you know, feeling that majority of us look at this and, I don't know, that purview.
I, I, I'm, I'm of the personal opinion, just in, in, I guess, if we're out of questions, we'll move forward with a vote here in just a second. But I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm listening to, um, our conversation and questions and it, there just seemed to be leading to more questions. You know, and I, I don't know of, at, at least in my tenure here, that we've ever discussed a policy that, um, was, was based on so many unanswered what ifs. And, you know, based on a, a poorly written, you know, gen- generally the language in, in legislation is pretty straightforward. But, uh, you know, not this.
I mean, I, I mean, I know in all the years that we've had policies that, or that things like this that came down the pike and it's like, it didn't make sense, it wasn't feasible, it wasn't a good idea, wasn't good for educating students. I can't tell you the specifics of what they were because generally when they're this vague and this poorly written and not thoroughly thought through, it just sounds like something good that, you know, somebody would say, hey, I got legislation passed. But it's, it's like the communication KRS from last year. They realized within two months after that went through, this was bad, this was written poorly. This has so many unintended consequences and like, I said earlier, it's, it's, what ends up being written and put out there was not the intent of the spirit of why it was brought forward. And I think this one will end up in that same way. And I, I think that maybe we give them time to fix it and then come back with something that's more clear cut. And we advocate and say, we would love to offer this, but it needs to be after school. It needs to be an extended school service. You send your vans to the schools, you take them to site A, B, and C with the parents' permission. And then I might be more willing to support a policy.
Yeah.
Can't take away, and not take away educational opportunity for, for everybody else.
For all the other kids.
My, my decision that for, as a parent, should not ever affect the rest of the class. I mean, that, you know, and I know, and I know there's a lot of reasons why it might unintentionally affect the rest of the class. Like if we brought, you know, cookies laced with peanuts, which happens in the elementary classes. But not sanctioned, um, legal language that says, well, um, Johnny and his family chose to do X, Y, Z thing and now the rest of us can't do what we would like to do, X, Y, Z. So with that, um, I, I don't know, if there's no other comments, I guess we'll move forward with a vote. Um, we did have a motion for Wolf and, uh, Ms. Bird. And so if there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor of.
Restate the motion.
Yes. The motion is to approve old business item A, Board Policy zero eight point one three five. It's the second reading. And I would not mind, Ms. Bird, if you would like me to read the entire policy.
No, I, I.
I've been made to do that once or twice.
That's what I'm looking at on my phone, I promise. One fifty-eight, two hundred and the policy.
Um, so all in favor of passing the poli- the policy at this time, um, say aye.
I'm in favor of having a policy.
Are you in favor of this policy at this time?
I'm in favor of having a policy, so I'm in favor of the policy at this time.
Okay, that's an aye. Any others? I, I guess, um, he- hearing, hearing no others, so, uh, and any opposed?
No.
No. So motion fails, uh, one to four.
So what, what was the motion? What was it? To approve the policy was. So you approved it as presented.
All right, uh, we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten. Um, Item A, Recommended Action, New Business Item A, District Calendar Recommendations. Discussion, since this is a first read, there's no approval needed.
I was on the calendar committee and I want to say that, um, they did a great job of preparing us for that. So we had a lot of great input from the, um, community that we got to look through. And it was interesting to see some of that feedback, so. I think that the feedback that we received from the district was actually reflected positively in the calendar.
Has everyone had a chance to review the calendar, I guess? We should ask that question. Okay, good. Um, all right, with that being said, we'll move on to Item B, um, recommended, oh, I'm sorry, uh, action, Item B, Dr. Housewald.
Yes, uh, thank you again, Chairman Parks. I recommend the board approve the recommended action, new business item B, which is the Boone County Schools District Implementation of HP one ninety.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Bird, do we have a second? Oh, sorry, Ms. Wolf and then Ms. Bird, sorry. Any discussion on Item B? Come on, we're having lively discussion. Let's have discussion.
Everybody's exhausted.
All right. And, uh, okay, no, no discussion on Item B, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Did everyone vote? Okay. Okay.
I think it was five oh.
Motion passes five zero, got it. Move on to Agenda Item C, uh, ten, Recommended Action, Item C, Dr. Housewald.
Yeah, this is simply a recommendation for the board to approve a recommended action, new business item C, new job description for a substitute general maintenance person. And I would recommend to approve the, uh, new job description as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve new business item C? Substitute general maintenance person as recommended.
Carolyn.
Ms. Wolf. Second. Ms. Young, any discussion? It's a very lively topic. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Ten, Recommended Action, New Business Item D, Dr. Housewald.
Yes, likewise, I recommend the board approve, um, Item D in the new, um, for the new job description for the finance specialist, um, as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve new business item D, new job description, finance specialist job description as recommended? Do we have a motion? Don't all speak at once.
A motion.
Motion, Ms. Maddox. Do we have a second? And Ms. Wolf, any discussion on Item D? Hearing none, we'll move forward.
I just want to.
Yep.
This replaces, right, a, a position?
You guys, you guys want to clarify it?
Yes, this is a current position that we have. We're just redirecting this position.
Okay, so we're not creating a new one. Okay, all right, just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Is this related at all? And I mean, I'm just looking at this to the budget committee discussion on the FMLA outsourcing. I mean, that has no ties to that at all.
That's in the HR department. This is in the business department.
Okay.
Great questions. All in favor, please say, any more discussion? Just making sure. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes five zero. All right, we're going to move on to Item, uh, E, which is old item triple C. Um, that is a memorandum of understanding for Pathfinder Counseling Services. Pulled from the consent agenda for discussion under new business, uh, by, uh, Board Member Maddox. So do I have a motion to approve Item E?
Motion.
Okay, I second it.
All right, motion to approve by Wolf and seconded by Ms. Maddox. Any discussion on the matter of Item E?
Um, yes, I, I just feel like it's my job as a board member to represent all my constituents and ask questions, even if they're kind of tough ones. Um, and so I look through all of the counselors and I read everything and, um, we definitely need counselors. We need, the, the counselors that we have cannot get to all the students that we have. So it's very important that we have counselors. Um, I just have a concern, um, and it's, I feel like I'm representing some of my constituents. Um, this particular counselor, and I was reading through the website and it was, you know, just depression, anxiety and, and that type of thing. And, um, but then I got to a part where it stated, um, you know, coupling counseling and, yeah, that's good. But then there was a, um, something that was blaring to me. And it said, uh, LGBTQ Alliance, an ally. And I just have constituents that just are not agreeing with that philosophy. So, uh, my question is if it's a counselor, um, you, what viewpoint is she going to take?
You do know that an ally is not a missionary.
No, I, I, I don't really want to get into a big discussion about it. I just want to voice my concern. That's it.
My concern would be if we have counselors that do not have LGBTQ Alliance on there, considering I am a parent of a kid who aligns with the LGBTQ lifestyle. I would not want my kid seeing a counselor that did not at least acknowledge them as a human being. So alliances are not missionaries. It just says that we're going to acknowledge you where you are.
Um, I, so as a person that has. as a person that has been in the uncomfortable spot you are now and questioned a mental health memorandum of understanding and had the ugly conversations that followed uh, from some people, I will say, never ask me personally why I, at the time, questioned a memorandum of understanding from a healthcare provider. So I'll ask the question directly tonight. How does one of our students become partnered with one of our healthcare providers?
What happens, does the school counselor make a recommendation?
Uh, the school counselor makes a recommendation, do they recommend a certain provider?
We, we have many providers, and not all of the providers are in every school. There is an individual, there's individual uh, provider.
Not every provider, just to paraphrase for people at home, not every provider's in every school.
Correct, that's right.
And the counselors in the school that are that are talking directly with the student, how how does the conversation, and so I, this is not a tier question, let me back up for a second. My my concern in the past, uh, Ms. Maddox, is that not that we have the partnership, it's it's that we get the kids to the partnership. And what I mean by that is to date, um, in all the years in Boone County Schools, we have still found no success, my daughter and I, with a counselor pairing us with a service provider that would actually provide this service. And it's been for multiple reasons, I would imagine. None of which are super acceptable to me, so we find ourselves, we found ourselves with private care outside of school hours. And as we just debated in the previous subject, um, those unfortunately, those hours come at the expense of our school day. So my question is, in terms of this provider and other providers, what is the service, do they come to the school to provide the service?
Yes, sir.
And how would, again, I'll ask, how would a student go about getting this service?
Two different ways. They would, if they're with a school counselor, and the school counselor feels like they need more, then they would count contact the parent to get consent to do that.
Okay.
If indeed, um, something was happening in a family, and the family came in, so it's similar, but they came in and said, we need more help, and our school counselor might say, I don't have that um, expertise.
Right.
Then we would use our counselor, our partners. The other thing, a parent could also come in and say, we need more help, we can't do it outside of time, but I understand you have such and such counseling in your building, can you make a referral, or can I make a referral? Everything is with parental consent.
Okay, thank you for that. I I wish, I I I my hope is, and I've and I've, I think I've said this many times before, Ms. Maddox, is that we, if anything, um, because of the wide variety of troubling circumstances that our families and students find themselves in, most, a lot of which I'm not experienced or familiar with myself. And the amount of various society societal pressures that are placed on adults, young people, tiny people. Uh, my my thought process now is that we need more providers that are willing to do this work outside of whether or not the parents have health insurance, for example. That seems to be a barrier for a lot of our families. Um, not necessarily if they are aligned with this group or that, but if they, for example, we know that um, very shortly Medicaid in Kentucky will be cut. And so how much mental health service will we be able to find for people? Cause we don't offer the service, just to be clear, we connect kids and families with the service. And so my question would be for this provider and other providers, will they provide the services outside of a parental health insurance policy?
Some of them will. That's when they go through, again, the Medicare, the Medicaid. Some of them of them will not.
Right.
I just have to be straight with that, there's.
Yeah.
I can't promise.
It's our medical, um, you know, our our situation.
Yes.
Sometimes in this country. All right, um. Any other statements or uh, questions about the memorandum of understanding Pathfinder Counseling Services?
I just have a question. If this counselor was recommended to a family and for whatever, or any counselor, let's do that, a- any counselor, that family, the parents. No, I don't want that counselor. Is is another counselor offered to them, another co- another, not not.
A provider?
Another provider, thank you.
Yes ma'am, we have had that situation before, and we've been able to change providers. We had to construct how to do it.
Right.
Because um, we don't have enough of our providers to care for all of the students. So we were able to talk with another provider, and they'd send a a person for us.
Okay, thank you.
I I just really implore the district to do a better job of connecting kids to providers. For us, we have failed miserably for our, my family specifically, the district has never once offered a provider out of a counselor's office, and then when I found a provider, the provider was approved on the vendor list and still never showed up at the school. Which is why I've repeatedly asked this question over many, you know, over the years. So my, as um, as as along with Ms. Maddox, that the district is making sure that we are, in fact, talking to students, making sure that we don't have all the answers, I'm gonna get you somebody that might, and I'm gonna help you talk to your family, which is, as we know, a very important conversation that uh, m- mister, Mrs. Parent, your child needs some additional help. We don't have the tools necessary, here's a provider that might help. And I think everyone can agree that if this provider has a specialty and a student in our community requires that specialty, we should, I I'm grateful that we have that provider on our list. If that is the specialty of whatever it is they provide. All right, anyway, with um, any more questions, comments? With that, all in favor of uh, item E? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I oppose.
Motion passes four one. All right. Uh, with that, we'll move on to um, item eleven, information proposals communications. Any board members have anything to report?
I wanna um, thank the school district for being at the Halloween this year, that was really cute. They were giving out full-size Reese cups, if you were good to be there, with um, hiring tags on them, so with the QR code, so it was really cute. But they um, they had a great little setup for that. And um, I went to two of the sessions for um, the council of councils for both Connor and Boone, and one of the big things I appreciated was the attention that our district is paying to AI in the classrooms and how we are playing catch-up in a lot of regard. Um, and then also talking a lot about map testing and how that's working throughout, so it it so it's been great to see some of this information get passed on to our site-based councils. And um, we also got a nice little timeline of district initiatives and stuff, so it was kind of, it was it was great to see it laid out in a, I think, four-year plan, five-year plan, or five? And then um, I mentioned earlier, the Health and Safety Committee that we met and started forming a charge, and we wanted to make sure the student voice was in there, but I also wanna speak to how well-rounded the committee is, we've got food service in there as well, we've got the SROs in there. Um, and a well-rounded group of educators and community members, so it's, and parents. So it's a, gonna be an interesting committee to see how, what what shakes out from that, but I just wanted to share that. Oh, Veterans Day, so I wanna thank all the schools on behalf of the veterans. Um, there were some amazing Veterans Day programs out there, I wanna point out, North Point actually had a um, grandson of one of the guys from Iwo Jima. And they gave every veteran there a little vial of sand from Iwo Jima. Um, that's something that you don't see often, and they had a live painter there painting the si- the scene, the famous scene of lifting the flag, so it was kinda cool to see those images. I I had the privilege to speak at Thornwild this year, and um, I'll tell you, their quartet was pretty spectacular, and their principal was in it, so that was kinda cool, but it was um, with some great programs throughout the district that honored our veterans, and I've loved seeing the pictures. So if you all haven't seen the pictures, Chad and Barbara took a lot of them, and they're all over social media, and go check them out, it was some amazing stuff happened through our district that day. And so thank you, Boone County Schools, for honoring our veterans.
Our new and improved operations committee met and um, welcomed several new members. And redid our charge for the committee to be um, inclusive of the fact that we are now total operations focused. Um, I think it was a really productive meeting, and I think that having the different operations directors rotate through as the needs arise will be a g- a a great improvement while still keeping the focus on keeping the district moving and um, appreciate the uh, different staff from the different departments who are volunteering their time after work to be there for that, um, because these are our folks that are probably up the earliest and out and about, um, doing all the things that they do to keep us to where we can have kids in warm, clean classrooms being educated by high-quality instruction, so um, it really excited about that. I do have a question I wanna bring up, I started hearing some whispers about a um, possible change in district procedure and how W twos are gonna be uh, provided to staff, that there was going to be a move to um, all electronic. Um, and there would be no more paper W twos mailed to homes or provided to buildings. Um, and and two two or three lives ago, I I I did payroll, I had to create W twos and ten ninety-nine miscellaneous forms were the two main ones that I had to provide. So I'm kinda familiar with what the IRS says you have to do and don't do. And I was sent today um, a picture of a pay stub that already says that this is going to be happening, starting, um, what's it say, important note, you were received twenty twenty-five mail, uh, I can't read the whole thing, but anyway, it says only no paper copies will be distributed, that's starting to go out now on pay stubs. Um, I looked up because this isn't a district-guided or determined thing, this is the IRS. And um, you don't wanna mess with the IRS, so I was, I kind of heard that there might be dedicated printers put in buildings for employees to be able to go print their own W twos. To me, that's a logistic nightmare, um, and I'm not sure if it's sa- if it's meets the key requirements of the IRS for employers to provide employees their W twos. Um, and I know currently, I get a mailed copy for being a board member, cause we get W twos for being board members. I get an electronic copy, I get a a paper copy. I'm old school, I like paper, but I also save the electronic because I have to upload it through a portal at my CPA's office to get my taxes done. My son does them, but I still have to upload it through his portal, he will not take my paper copies, so I I I understand in today's world that is. But I also know, in all of the years, we sat on the Transportation Committee and and talked about things, a lot of our hourly staff in our classified roles, they don't have laptops and computers and iPads and nice fancy printers, and a lot of them don't care about technology, they don't wanna use technology. And in a, in twenty twenty-five, everyone just assumes that everyone has the capa- capabilities to deal electronically. And in what I looked up today, just to refresh my memory, because again, it's been a lot of years since I've looked at current requirements, um, one of the key number one things mentioned is to provide electronic W twos, it can only be provided by an a, an employer, an electronic W two, if the employee has specifically consented to this format. Paper is the default method if no consent is given. So are we just putting notices on stubs that we're not going to give? You know, it's gonna be electronic, and we're not gonna give you paper anymore? Because I don't think that's our choice, and where, when, what's the plan for ensuring that employees give their consent to an electronic delivery of their W twos? Did we just make an assumption that this is gonna be easier on us, it's gonna save money, which is always great to find those things? But again, the process of providing a W two isn't a district-driven process, it's an IRS-driven process. So that's my first question. And even if an employee gives consent, they have the right to withdraw their consent. So what are we gonna do there? And when they withdraw their consent, and I don't ever remember being asked as a board member, and I don't know if staff were either then, I would've, but assumed not, because I've not had anyone tell me that they were ever asked for the electronic copy, I think maybe it was just automatically done. Um, if they withdraw their consent, we have to give them a paper copy, and I don't know if a printer in a random storage room in a building on, in the f- far left wing would meet the spirit of, we have to provide a paper copy, that seems like to me, we're giving them a way to get their own paper copies, so. Um, it does say, the one thing that I think that it, we might be able to get around it, but then I'm not an attorney, I'm just reading raised on paper, it says that employers must disclose to employees the procedures for obtaining a paper copy and whether requesting a paper statement is treated as a withdrawal of their consent to electronic delivery. Okay, if we put it on a pa- on a on a stub that says, we're only gonna start giving you electronic copies, when are we gonna notify them of the procedures, has anyone even considered that? Or are we just, again, deciding, this is the way we're gonna do it, and you either like it or you lump it, I don't like that. Um, employers must also provide a clear statement of the hardware and software requirements for accessing electronic W twos and instructions on how to access and print the statement. This ensures employees have the avail- ability to receive and retain a physical copy if needed. Have we done that? Can anyone tell me? Um, so this is November. January, we will be here before we know it, and those W twos are required to be out by January thirty-first, and I would like some feedback on how this decision was made, why this went out on stubs. Where's the instruction of the procedures, does it meet the law on how that we have to provide a paper? How's the um, how are we gonna receive consent to do this? Since we've already told people this is what we're going to do, how are we gonna get the employees' consent? When's that gonna happen, how's it gonna happen, and how's it gonna be communicated? I just arbitrary decision-making, just because it might be a little bit easier on us is not fair to our employees, and I don't think that this meets the IRS.
Thank you for your continued advocacy. Um, I'm sure the district will provide those answers to you. Um, I'm sure the district will provide those answers to you. And I'm interested to know as well, myself, actually, Ms. Byrd. Uh, that being said, um, I, I have successfully ma- um, allowed the college students to sit till the end of the meeting, which is probably the first time in a long time. So come on up and say your name and where you go to school and that way you'll get into the record and then you can get out of here.
Oh, now they're, now they're really hurt.
Yep.
My name is Tara Pierce, I'm a University of the Cumberland student.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I'm Lily Batte, I go to Northern Kentucky University.
Thank you.
Sarah, Sarah Nebr, University Cumberland.
Annabelle Rollins, Northern Kentucky University.
Sydney Curley, Northern Kentucky University.
Chloe Hauser, Northern Kentucky University.
Adam Klein, Northern Kentucky University.
Alexandra Talby, Northern Kentucky University.
Brianna Hirschner, Northern Kentucky University.
Miranda Bowling, Northern Kentucky University.
Cassidy Klein, Northern Kentucky University.
Mackenzie Kegley, Northern Kentucky University.
Ally Rosenvoss, Northern Kentucky University.
Madison Redlinger, University of the Cumberland.
Thank you. All right, um, you can thank me later for letting you sit here the whole time, or making you sit here the whole time.
Annabelle, were your two parents teachers as well, I thought so.
All right, we're gonna move on to agenda item twelve, uh, which is closed session, there's no closed session, so if someone would like to move on to thirteen and motion to adjourn. Miss Byrd, do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. We got three? All right, motion passes three to two.